Spending in college, just in the spirit of the program intended to respond to the COVID pandemic, get kids back in the classroom, get them back to, you know, get them the services that they need as they readjust back into in-person learning. And so certainly we've seen the revenues and the expenses that kind of tie in with that. So on the, on the screen here, we've got a breakdown of our different expenses as it relates to our categories, you know, salaries, benefits, fees for services, things like that. And then also the building location where, or the, the program level where it was spent. Some of the revisions that we made, and this slide is exactly what you saw last month, so I won't go line by line on it. But long story short, you know, we had some, you know, we had some estimates on where we thought staff salaries were going to go. Staff salaries went to a different place too, notably including our transportation, which were not up for negotiations at the time. We made an adjustment there as well. And then we've also had a significant number of unfilled positions throughout the year. Now, when we talk about fiscal year 2023 and why we can't just eliminate those positions, obviously we still need to maintain our maintenance of effort. A lot of the positions that weren't getting filled are special education, educational assistance. So, so we still do need that help. We still do need to maintain that maintenance of effort. So we do need to make efforts to fill those positions. And there are ways we're looking at that a little bit differently. We'll talk about that as we get into next year's budget as well. We also had some increased in costs in, in some of the sped areas. I just noted some of the high points here, but certainly there were some sped increases across the board as well. We had some additional purchase services in, in 2122, the biggest one being your snowplow outsourcing. Just given some of the staffing concerns we had where we had, you know, obviously superintendent was driving bus. You know, we didn't want to run into a situation where we had superintendent driving snowplow. So we were, so we were looking at a scenario in which we didn't have enough staff to really get us up to speed on keeping our parking lots clear. We ended up outsourcing that last year. It's something that I think worked very well. We're looking at doing here again for the upcoming year. You know, seeing how that would work going forward, but that was a cost that we had to absorb into the revised budget. We did have some inflationary impacts, obviously, on our utility and fuel costs. I will say it says gas is remarkably more expensive this month than it was last month when I gave this presentation. We continue to reap the benefits of a natural gas fleet, or not, I'm sorry, propane gas fleet, and as opposed to diesel fleet. So certainly some costs, I don't want to call them savings because we did have to make an adjustment there, but it could have been a lot worse. So, so that, that's, that's looking real, real better than it could have. And then we've got some capital purchases. Now, this last line here, you're going to see some of these costs are actually going to be getting kicked into next year. And that's mostly a timing issue. Right now, trying to get a contractor to show up can be next week. It could be six months from now, so we're having a little bit of some timing there. In addition, you know, things that used to take a couple of months to turn around are taking a lot longer. So, you know, one of the, one of the key examples would be, you know, we started purchasing buses this year. And right now, there's no promise that they're going to get them by the first day of school. So we're trying really hard to get that. The good news is we still get to drive our old buses until the new ones arrive. So we're not losing any buses, but certainly there's some timing issues there. So some of the things that we thought were going to be done, you know, at this stage in the game, we're still kind of waiting on a lot of that just logistics. So now for the new stuff, we've got our food service fund here, revenues and expenses. And one thing you'll notice is that both of those have gone substantially up from where they were last year. Big reason for that is just because of the free, the free breakfast and free lunch. One of the biggest things that go into our food service funds are participation rates and, you know, things like cost of food, cost of salaries. But that participation rate is key. You know, in 2021, fiscal year, so 2020, 2021, our participation went way down. Because we had kids at home, kids not participating, you know, that was just kind of when everything was starting to, you know, settle in. And so as we came into the, this year where we're back to in-person learning, you know, and all of our breakfasts and lunch were being fully funded. That caused our participation to go way up. So, so that's why you do see a lot of those expenses and revenues. Unfortunately, that program is ending as of this year. There has been no, the, the federal government doesn't have the authority to extend it. And the state and state legislature during their legislative session didn't take any action to fund it either. Which means that we're kind of back to the, call it pre-COVID model, where we are, you know, going to be looking at, you know, the free and reduced forms again. We're going to be looking at cost of school lunches and, and all of that. So it's going to go back into that fund balance management exercise as well. We do have communications that are going out to parents to kind of get them, to help them become aware that this is a thing. It's, it's really out of our hands. I mean, it's a substantial cost, you can see, you know, and it's just one of those things that if we don't get it funded through the state, then it has to get funded through, through the program itself. One thing that we did do in this year that is also not present in the number last year is our, our nutrition fund balance had gone precariously low. When we were ending a couple of years ago, and so we had to make a couple of moves to really help protect that fund balance a little bit. So we backed off some of those overhead costs such as, you know, like utilities, you know, where normally we would allocate out a section of utilities to them. We pulled some of that back just because it helps, helps reduce some of their expenses and help grow their fund balance a little bit. So this year with their fund balance recovering, we did kind of re-implement some of those, some of those allocations. So we are expecting to kind of give them their, their normal set of allocations for overheads. So we'll continue to monitor that. We look at a community education. Now, one of the things that we're, we're seeing here, just some increases again across the board. One of the unique things in, in food service to an extent is like this as well. One of the unique things about community education is we've got a lot of levers. We can pull to control that fund balance. If we hit a point where we're losing money, you know, we can raise fees. We can reduce the size of programs if we need to. We can change our offerings. There's a lot of things we can do to grow, stabilize, right size, do what we need to do in community education. So one of those needs that we identified when we were looking at staff salaries is the fact that we had a whole line of families that wanted to get into our kids connection program. We have all the space to host kids connection, but because of the staffing levels, we couldn't come anywhere near to filling up those things. And so it was, it was a rough way to run a business when you have willing customers and you have space to do the business in, but you can't actually do the business because of staff salaries. So we did make some pretty significant jumps in there, which we hope will increase our staffing, increase our use and kind of grow that program a little bit. One thing that Mr. Lindquist has started to discuss is the, the fee schedule. I believe you heard that a few months ago. He's, he's looking at bringing some of those fees up. We haven't seen that drop in the budget yet. There's a little bit of a trailing effect with the, with it hitting the revenue. But we'll just, you know, and, and you'll see this when we look at the next year's budget as well. There is a lot of, let's make sure our fees are at the right level where families can afford them. Let's make sure our fees can support our programs. So it's just a little bit of a, we don't want to be too aggressive just because there's a little bit of a shortfall here. Obviously a prolonged shortfall, we're going to want to do something to correct that. Now, our other funds here, this is a bit of a busy slide, but it's really, you know, the, the last five funds are pretty simple. Your debt service, that's money and money on, that's to pay our bonds. Funds nine and 21 are, are internal funds. They're, they're used to fund benefits, money in, money out. So those ones are actually just budgeted to balance. So there's no real, no real surprises in that one. And then Fund 16 is our construction fund, bond fund. That one is, we're down to basically interest earnings only on that. We're, we're almost through all the principal there. We continue to work with ICS and Mr. Lindquist. I know we just had a BAC committee meeting to kind of see where we're at with that. So we're continuing to spend that down. And then obviously with the facilities committee, we're going to be rolling that into, okay, we've spent all of our bond money. Now let's take care of these, you know, these renovated buildings. We'll be, we'll be transitioning into that LTFM. And then lastly, we have Fund 45, which is OPEB. And we're doing our final draw this year on OPEB, so that should be fully sunsetted this year. So when we get to it in the 2223 budget, you'll see that fund is just going to be snipped off there. So looking at our enrollment here, obviously a steady, steady decline. One of the things, I, I think one of my data points on the graph I noticed here this evening is on 2122. I think that one fell a little too low. That should be a little closer to 4,000 there. Really what this should show is that yes, we've had declining enrollment, but we've seen that kind of stabilize. You know, and it's starting to rebound slightly. I'm not ready to say, hey, we're growing yet. But, but we're certainly stabilizing on our enrollment levels and that's a great thing to see. This little chart, I know we've seen this before. This is just kind of showing, you know, hey, if we get 100 kids, 100 kids aren't just the revenue side of the house. 100 kids are also, we have a lot of services that we provide to those 100 children when we're providing an education. You know, so we're not only just teaching them in the classroom, we have to get them to school. They might need some of our special education services. They have to eat, you know. So there's a lot of things that go into serving students that go beyond just, we just need to add a couple of teachers. And look at that, we have an extra $500,000 to our budget. There's a lot of impacts that kind of trickle around, especially when you have a large number of students that, you know, that we stop kind of that rebound on. So it's just good to kind of keep that, this in the back of our mind, especially because when we talk about, you know, 100 students, it's not for teachers because these students aren't just all, you know, all coming into East Bethel Elementary, you know. They're all, they're, they're scattering all over the districts. So, you know, but it might, it might equal, you know, a couple of teachers over here and a program over there. And so, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at, you know, classroom sizes district wide and where those kids land. Audit the fund balance. We've seen this slide a number of times. We're actually in audit week this week. We'll have another audit week here later on this summer, and then I can finally get this slide updated for this year and show you that one for the next year. So I mean, this, no changes here?
Yes, go ahead. So is that unemployment number, is that high or low?
I'm sorry.
Unemployment number in the assigned column?
Oh, the unemployment. So what that was is we were, we were not getting our billing for Minnesota unemployment for basically the entire COVID period. So we knew we had something coming, but because of some action at legislature, we didn't quite have a grasp on exactly what that monster would look like. So that was an assignment that we had made based on the anticipation that we were going to have to make a pretty substantial unemployment payment. That one is actually going to fall off when we hit this audit cycle because a lot of those bills are, are, should be caught up at this point. So we're not anticipating this, this growing liability out there.
Was it because the billing system from the state wasn't coordinated during COVID or it was just kind of building up or?
I believe it was more of a hold in, in Mr. Nelson. I don't know if you've got a little more context of this, but I believe it was more of a hold because of the legislative action going on between the unemployment.
They really wanted to make sure you were paying your folks while this was all going on. Hence why our bus drivers continued to get paid. We didn't want them leaving or going on unemployment. But that's, that was their way of doing it. But if you don't budget for it, what if we would have had, what if COVID and the shutdown had gone even longer? We can't continue to pay people if they are not actually working.
Okay, so that was a funding building case that went that way?
Right. Because, you know, there were worries that were saying, oh, we don't know when they're going back. We're so sorry. But that's what unemployment's there for. That's why we have unemployment insurance, you know. We were scared we wouldn't get those people back, you know, if they go find work somewhere else. So for us, we found other duties for them. Remember, we moved them into daycare and, you know, making lunches and things like that. So we got creative. Thank you.
Yeah, so some of those things that are under the, are under the assigned, you know, obviously we've got the subsequent year budget, the 2.45 million. That's going to update to what our, our new adopted number is going to be, the unemployment COVID-19. We'll be looking at those assignments. The, the top three are more, those ones, those ones are a little more enduring, but, you know, and then we've got a couple of capital related ones with bus purchases and future capital. So one of the exercises we go through with audit is we start to identify some of those assignments that we'd like to make. And then I present those to the board. And then as long as the board agrees that yes, let's go ahead and assign that fund balance, then it winds up in that bucket. So those things aren't necessarily driven by statute. Those ones are more governance and management decision to, to take and hold sections of the fund balance for those designated purposes. Because otherwise what happens is we dump that into the unassigned fund balance. It looks like we've got all this money. And then that $500,000 hits and, you know, we don't have as much money as we thought we did. So it's, it's kind of a, I don't want to call it a budgeting tool, but it's, it's a good way to show that your fund balance isn't always what it seems. So looking into the, the original budget here for our general fund. So on the left-hand side, we've got our revenues. On the right-hand side, we have our expenses by, by type. So some of the key differences, obviously our state revenues, we get our 2% increase from the state, so we're thankful for that. Also, we've continued to tick up students, you know, so we're adding some students onto that. Not a, not a ton. I didn't add 150 students in there, but, you know, we were, we're continuing to see some of that growth. So we've got some of that built in there. So, so really looking strong in the state revenue realm there. Like I mentioned before, some of our local revenues will probably taper off a little bit as people get caught up on their property taxes. Those funding, the federal through MDE, that's a lot of your ESER money and some of those other COVID grants. So we've got one more year of that coming up. And then the direct from Fed, that was the, that was the USAC grant, that one-time money, that bubble that passes through. So that one will come and go. And then just some, some other things like seams manufacturing winds up at that bottom line and some of the other little local sales. So really what, what this means is we've got one more year left of, of a lot of these significant grants. You know, I'd, I'd mentioned before, one of the things we'll be doing is we're going to be reviewing the positions that are funded through ESER. We're going to see how that's costing throughout the year. And then if we need to, you know, move some other things into ESER in order to get that money spent down in time or back some of the spending off to, you know, manage it. If we're spending it too quickly, that's just kind of a budgeting exercise that will be going through over the next year. You know, as, as some of these grants start to wind down. Our, our big purchases that we've done with ESER, some of the cabling that's being done in the schools. We've got some, they're like giant Roomba's. They're like robots that help clean the floors in some of our larger schools. Some of those larger purchases will be winding those down as well, just because obviously those are one-time purchases with our one-time money. So we'll see some of that start to wind down as well. And then in this, what you'll see, I know in February, we first talked about, we were looking at a little poster of a balanced budget. Some of the things that have kind of changed since then, you know, I've mentioned that some of those larger capital projects are kind of getting pushed into this year. You know, when you talk about $600,000 worth of buses and a $400,000 HVAC unit, you know, that's a million dollars worth of a shortfall right there. You know, so that's money that we're not spending last year that we're spending next year. So we have to, to be ready for that when, when those bills do come due. And then of course, when we look at some of these other impacts to the general fund, we're in year two of all of our agreements that we made this year for our, for our groups. And then we're also negotiating from a general fund perspective with three groups here in the upcoming year as well. So there's some assumptions built in there. Food service has a couple of groups up as well when we get to them.
Go ahead, Mr. Schwartz. On the ESER funds, last year we hired, maybe it was, these can help on a part of this. So last year, we, with the ESER funds, we had five teachers that we hired in kind of a full-time zone. So we had some retirements. Did some of those people move into those positions? Did we could add some more?
It was, it was kind of like we hired them and then we needed them. And so we just started, they logged with these subs and then they would hire them in permanent and then we'd have to hire more.
Right. So then you hired more subs to fill the money up. They use the money so that they're around.
Yeah, we didn't want to waste any of those dollars. So the minute they took them for another position, we just moved them in there. But keep in mind, we also hired seven regular teachers with ESER funds as well. Because part of ESER funding is to reduce class size and help with some of that, especially reading retention. And so seven of our teachers currently are quoted under ESER as well.
And then when that runs out?
Well, you know, you hope things start balancing out. We've got some really small class sizes now because of that. So everyone's aware that that's happening. I know Erica and I often talk about the cliff. We're, we're trying really hard to make it a slope. We, we use that reference almost daily, I think. And so we know that we need to be ready for that. So we're kind of trying to move the class sizes back to a normal state next year, but still using those funds that can help the district save money, but yet kind of put them in. them in a different place. We're also using our reading literacy teachers there, one of the most brilliant moves we've ever done, I mean, scores are already really, I mean, I think they'd probably be the biggest bang for the buck, so we're using it for staffing, but in a good way. We're seeing benefits from it.
And, and the way that this funding is designed, now, I, I can't criticize because I can't come up with a better way to do it, but they have an obligate date that exists, and it lines up a federal fiscal year, one year from now. And so, what happens with it is when they say everyone has to have fully spent their money by that date, it naturally creates the cliff, because on that date, if you are coded into the bucket 155, which is ESER 2, then if you're, if you're in that bucket and the, and the bucket runs dry, we either need to find a home for you in our general fund, because there's no other option, you know, there's, there's no other funding there. So it does create a bit of a natural cliff, and that's what, and it's not just unique to St. Francis area schools, it's every school, district in the, in the state, we've all kind of done the same thing.
That's why we tried really hard never to go above the average of where our retirements have been. It's usually between seven and 12, you know, I mean, can be, and so that's what, we've just tried really hard to stay in that range, so that when people naturally retire, you know, we've got staff that can slide into those positions, but we're trying really hard, I think, not to create a cliff, because when this money's gone, everyone's going to be like, well, what are we doing now, you know?
All right, so looking at the nutrition and community education budgets, you know, again, the free lunch programs ending for, beginning with the next school year, so with no action to extend it, you know, that, that does mean we're going to be returning to a model in which families will be, will be paying for lunches again. However, we are getting some federal grants that, we're anticipating some pretty significant, excuse me, federal grants that are expected to help offset some of those rising food costs. We actually had our food vendor reach out to us a few months ago, and basically tell us, you know, at a time when food vendors are just telling districts, we can't serve you anymore, ours at least reached out to us and said, well, we can still serve you, but we're going to have to, you know, bump up our contract cost quite a bit. And they did, and our choices were either to accept the new cost or to find a new food vendor. So that's just a reality we face right now with the rising food costs, but we are expecting to, we've, we've got some, some signals that the, that some of the federal grants that will be coming in are going to help kind of mitigate that, so it doesn't immediately find its way into school lunch prices. The big, the big issue, I'm not going to call it an issue, the, the big question that we have going into this year is going to be our participation rates. You know, where are families going to land after having had free lunches, free breakfast, free lunch, all year, for almost two years? Are they going to continue to utilize those programs? Are they going to, you know, are they going to fill out their, their free and reduced? Are they going to, you know, what, what is going to happen in this? You know, we certainly hope we continue to see the participation, you know, I, I think Ms. Colby does a wonderful job, you know, managing the program and, and providing all the, you know, all the options out there, so we hope to see that participation, but obviously, if, if we don't get the participation, then that, that changes the math quite a bit.
That form you fill out for families, when our quarterly new paper goes out, could that form be in there, a little story telling them why you should have this filled out and sent in to us?
Chris is already on that, and he's already on it, he's ready to go, and he wrote a really nice letter to go along with it, it's, it's going to be good, and explaining the benefits of all of it. We will be coming to, we're totally coming to with an increase of some kind, it'll be small, but I agree with Eric, it looks like they are willing to cover that, the difference, the inflation difference, but again, they can cover it, but for how long? And then does that create a cliff later on? You know, I just, I don't think any school really knows for sure what to do, but we will get the kids on that, and we did make it all electronic now as well, people love that, that really helps.
Okay.
I think we'll see more peanut butter. Who knows?
And, and just as a note, we do have two food service groups that are up for negotiations this year, so obviously, depending on how those contracts settle, we'll certainly see some, some cost movement that'll happen in the revised budget to reflect any changes there. Over on the community outside of the house, you know, again, those, those levers that we pull to help increase our, our, you know, our use and our staffing levels and our participation levels and all that will, will kind of drive the fees in it, you know, and in a lot of ways, you manage your community education fund balance and, and programming like you would a business. I think the biggest thing that's coming up in the community education side of the house would be preschool, there's a lot of discussion, I know at the legislature, it's, it's not really a, it's not an if, but a when, on when, you know, preschool instructors are, you know, going to become part of the teacher contract, and how might that impact our preschool programs, so there are some changes coming about, but, you know, it's, we're, we're kind of just holding serve on that to see, you know, how that, how that evolves. And then, of course, in both of these funds, we always try to make sure we watch those overhead allocations, just because, you know, we want to be fair to our general fund, we want to be fair to our other groups as well, you know, the food service and the community education, but we don't necessarily want to overburden them and, and dry out any funds because we're over allocating overhead expenses on them, so we, we're always kind of monitoring that too, because it, it is a, it's a management exercise, just to make sure those fund balances kind of stay within the comfort level. And then the other funds, you know, really, the, the, the one takeaway would be on Fund 16, you know, goal is just going to be to continue to spend on that bond money, you know, if, if we can get it all done and, and roll it, you know, and close out that fund and move into LTFM, you know, that'd be great. You know, it remains to be seen how much of that progress gets made in the next year. I think last year, we would have loved to see it get done this year, and, you know, so we continue to make great progress towards it, you know, but we'll, but the budget's going to just reflect that our goal is to try to spend down those interest earnings, get those projects wrapped up so that we could, you know, fully sunset that, that bond project. So it's a little longer than three minutes, but, but any, any questions on any of the material that we covered? And again, you know, you'll have an opportunity to review both the revised budget and the original budget for next year as part of your action items, so that'll be how those will each get adopted.
I see no questions, thank you, Mr. Partush.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, to the superintendents' report.
All right, I'll make my own brief tonight, there's obviously been so many questions about safety, I'm not going to get into heavy items tonight. I have tasked Chris Langquist with leading our crisis team, he willingly, very much wants to do that, Shelley Blommer was also on that, but she's leaving, but he is going to be presenting to all of you an updated plan. The last time our RNC plan, quite large, as you can see, was updated, was on, almost 2020, 19, 2019, on November, and we all know what happened in 2020, so it kind of, it went into place, and then we didn't have students here. This can't necessarily be shared, it has our rally points in it and things like that, that we don't want everyone in the world to know about. If someone knows exactly where our rally points are, that doesn't make any sense. Today, I was covering summer school, every back door was propped open, and so I had to go over and talk to every single, it's hot, it's steamy, the air conditioning isn't kicking in because it's not, the degrees aren't hot, you know, it's like our own homes, right? You want air moving, but it's hard to tell people, we live in this beautiful community, you think it can't happen here, but almost every door in the back end was propped open because it's nicer outside than it is in the building. And so I think that's our biggest change, you can have all the plans in the world, you can have all the staff in the world, if you look at this, if you look at this latest tragedy, they had everything, they had their own police department on site, I mean, they couldn't have had any more, and still things went awry. And I'm not saying, what more can we do, but I am saying, we are working on updating our plans even more. We've been talking a lot at BAC, and I know that Mike and Rob can talk about this too, I did put, this is a segment from our, our school webpage on there, on the Raptor system, unfortunately, it's working really great in some buildings, like you go over to St. Francis Elementary, parents walk in with their ID, they whip it out, out comes this beautiful badge, they put it on, and they walk in. You walk into another building, Mimi, Mimi, you know, it's technology, right? It's not working. And so then you look at their ID, you check who it is, you know, you, you do the best that you can, but it doesn't, you know, it doesn't go into a database where we're checking for people, people that may have just bought a weapon or something like that. So I need the board to know that we take school safety super seriously, and we are doing everything in our power, and you have a really nice presentation coming your way. Chris won't be at this meeting or the next meeting, and we really want Karsten to be a part of that as well, to make sure that he wants to sign this. This isn't an old plan, and it's still really, really good, but there's parts of it that don't make a ton of sense either. There's parts of it that are, like, how do we get the buses there to a rally point? You know, who, who's in charge of that? All the names in here are people that used to be in charge, those, those names have changed and things like that. So I want you to know that we're really working on that, and I want our community to know that we're really working on that. One thing we are better at, and I think it kind of comes down to even our middle school situation, is the communication. We know how to do that right now, and I think, you know, you don't want to be thankful for a situation, but in some ways, I'm kind of thankful because it, it made us fix it, you know? Baseball news, holy cow, are you kidding me? You know, this is cool stuff. Of course, they're playing tomorrow, and we're interviewing our director of teaching and learning, and curriculum, I would love to be at baseball, but Pam and I will be at interviews, so hopefully they win again, and then I can, and go to the game on Wednesday. Some really great news from track and field, I put that in there as well. We've got some really big network updates coming, if you hear rumblings from staff that they wish we had some better network stuff, Andy Carrier is amazing, he knows that needs to happen, he's taken the bull by the horns, and he's doing it in a off-peak time, so that's been really nice. And then I did want to let you know that we are bringing four candidates into Mono to interview. Karsten would really like to meet the finalist or the final two and select that himself, and I think that's super smart, that's a part of his cabinet, and it needs to be his decision, but we will do the filtering for him, and so that he has a voice from the team. And then, final, just a shout out, I don't care if you have graduation on a Friday or Saturday, I don't care if you have graduation inside or outside, the custodians work their tails off to make it happen, every single one of them, it doesn't matter if they're at the elementary, the high school, middle school, they all help. I heard mixed reviews on Saturday, so many people love it, so many people don't like it, the calendar has it back on Friday for the following year, maybe that's a way to do it, you know, just doing it every other year like that, but I just wanted to do a sincere shout out to all of them, it takes a lot of work to make that happen, so. And I thought the gym felt good, that was the comment I got, that I just assumed it was still going to be hot. That's what your renovations did, it presented an environment where we can have something really nice in our gym and our PUC, and it felt good. I was not uncomfortable in there, you know, that was nice, so. That's all I've got. Mr. Schwartz?
Usually for Mike Starr, you put your role on there, so I don't know if you can do this for me.
Well, we're, we're done, I don't have those numbers.
For next year, the kindergarten years, or?
Well, they're still, really not done, they are still, honestly, they're still rolling in, I signed three more today, well, they were here probably from last week, but I signed them today, they're still coming in, people are still moving, I had two families call today, they're waiting, how do we, how do we get a house, can we open and all first, we're going to be living in an apartment, but we're moving to your district, things like that, that's pretty normal for the summer. We have not settled on how many kindergarten teachers we want, because we're kind of catering in a few, is it Cedar Creek, right? It's hotter, we're, there's one, one of the East Bethel kindergartens that we, they're already seeing some numbers of, you know, they're going up, so. Before I leave, I would give the final for Mike Starr, and then anticipated to grow, that we've added a kindergarten to every year I've been here in August, always, because they just get too big, so.
Thanks.
Good time to have that, right? Oh, and I should tell you, we are working so hard on that Bethel thing, that little strip of land, oh my gosh, please know that I am doing everything to have that done before I leave, but, boy, I'll tell you what, that has turned into a lot more than someone would think, so. I will get it to you as soon as it's done. Thank you.
In the development or improvement of our safety plan, like, how is that going about? Is there going to be input from other stakeholders, like community members?
Absolutely, absolutely. What he wants to do, and he presented to cabinet first, and he talked about how he wanted to play back, you know, it will involve an entire team, I think he wants to do surveys and things like that, he just wants to make sure it's the way Karsten wants to do it, he feels a little nervous to get kind of get going on it too much, but he wants to present to you what he's envisioning, and then if everyone's on board, moving forward with that. But he wants to have all stakeholders involved, even students.
I think one thing that we noticed with, while there was, a lot of parents were not allowed to help out where they felt they could, and I think also, I think that really gets confused in this discussion, is people yell, "arm the teachers," and, I don't know, I don't, I don't necessarily think that you should arm anyone who doesn't want to be armed, and I wouldn't relate to teachers, my stance on it would be, and my two cents would be, that you would allow people who legally can carry to carry, and that doesn't just necessarily mean staff, or it doesn't just mean teachers, I mean, and I definitely wouldn't want anyone who's uncomfortable with a gun carrying a gun, but if they are comfortable, and if they're trained, and if they're licensed, I personally carry, and I have no fear of anyone who goes through the routes and can stand up and, and help out in that regard, I, I think that, I don't know, I, I think it's going to continue to happen, continue to happen, because what we've seen in this time and time again is police can't be everywhere, and I just think, I just think something that gets confused is people automatically say, oh, I'm supposed to be teaching, I'm not supposed to be an arm, it's not asking, I'm not, I'm not asking in my argument about this, I'm saying there are teachers that would prefer this, there are janitors, there are gym teachers, and there are bus drivers perhaps, there are superintendents, there are school board members, that could do good in a situation like this, and I'm thinking something like that perhaps needs to be looked at when we consider this, that's just my two cents, but that'll be the honor of it.
Do you know what the state law states?
I was going to say, you can do that now.
The state law does allow a superintendent, if someone comes in, shows their, their conceal and carry license, they encourage you to have it for at least five years, there'll be something new that those kinds, there's kind of guidelines, but superintendents can approve that.
Really?
Minnesota state law already has that in place, I'm not aware of many districts that do it, with the exception of off-duty police officers, and we have many of those in our district, that I am aware of, that they, they're coming to a game, they're an officer, they have zero problem with that.
And I, I had no idea, thank you for informing me, how does a person go about doing that?
I can look up the, the law for you and send it over to you.
If I was just looking up the law, I didn't know if you yourself are this, this kind of protocol, I just see the signs that all this law-abiding students are following.
Am I using the word law right?
There's state statute.
There's a state statute that says if with, now, I will tell you, this happened in my last district, I brought all of those to the school board to make sure that they were okay with that, just because I, I'm not a big fan of, this one person gets to make that decision, that gets, you know?
It also, it also, if you name it, it takes away the effect of being concealed.
I think if my memory serves me correct, I haven't looked up the law, Jeff Bright's pulling it up right now. I think there's something in the law too where it has to be locked up, and other people in the building may not even know that that individual has, they may be, you've, you've had that there for how many, I mean, there's something to that as well, but I'm-
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll send it out to all of you tomorrow.
Great. Mr. Starr?
This could be a separate discussion, what we're talking about right now, this probably won't happen at school board meeting right now, but a special committee brought together for this type of discussion, because what I'm hearing here goes completely against my background, when I went through the police academy, my training, my background, what I have done, and I do not want to see anybody carrying that's not been through a training program, it's not as easy to carry as people think they're to carry.
Well, that's what the state law says.
It's a whole different ballgame, you have a body in front of you, you pull a gun out.
I don't think, no, no one, no, that a licensed police officer has that, has even come to me, honestly.
I think, I think we were, I think Ms. Geese and I were explaining the state law, this isn't anything that, I mean, that's the state law, it wasn't, we're not assigning anything here.
That's what I said, it'd be a whole different meeting for this, because there are complicated, there are different situations, you know, that people don't think about, you get into a discussion on this, and you're very deep into it, and it could be ugly, truly ugly, if that should happen, and that's my feel, my background of 20-plus years, corrections and law enforcement.
Yes, Mr. Schwartz? And I know when you get ahead of the people that are doing the presentations, and thank you for that, I was just, I wanted to say that there all has to be this kind of- I was just, I wanted to say that there all has to be this kind of ability out of the stuff. So, when you walk around and you see five doors open or whatever, it's like, no, that's not, that's not following the protocol. That's not the way it is. I mean, even though we have a nice little book, we have to enforce those rules to these people that are doing it. We can't have.
And we did a perimeter check, like, and these are just the starting points before this committee gets started. Because we want to come with, like, stuff, you can't start a committee and go, "Okay, let's do a perimeter check." There is a time every day when kids come to school and when we release, that your perimeter is completely, it is what it is. Jake, you walk in, 300 kids, I don't notice, Jake, you just don't. They come in and you're trying to make sure everyone's a kid. I mean, we, there's 25-year-olds that look like they're 16. And so, we know that we've got perimeter issues, especially our high school and our middle school, because we just allow kids to come in. How do you do that and not feel like, I mean, do we want to have a scantron, every kid coming in? No, but, you know, how, how do you do it? How do you make your perimeter safe? We feel really good the minute that bell rings, it's like click, 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 every door goes to lock. And the principal can check if a door is prepped open, right? I just happened to be the principal next door at the Learning Center today. I'm not watching anything because I don't have their cameras. But I walked back there and I see the doors open. And obviously everyone closed them for me and things like that. But it's that check in and check out. So we've got perimeter breaks too, and we've got to fix that. Go ahead, Ms. Armstrong.
I agree completely with what Mike Starr is saying too. I definitely would not force this on anyone. That's why I'm against when people say, "Armed the teachers." But I, I would be interested in getting in that conversation as far as trying something new to look at. How can we go about getting another situation? Because like, the superintendent just said, "I just dropped my son off at theater practice, wide open, you walk right in." Or go during the day, there's kids out on recess. It's, the simple fact is, is there's not always someone around to protect him. There's not always a locked door between you and an intruder. So, I, I agree with Mike Starr that you definitely wouldn't want it for someone who's not past criticize, you know, criticism and also been licensed to do so, so. But I think this is an interesting conversation going forward. And continually doing the same thing over and over again leaves us with what we're dealing right now, which is the same thing over and over again.
Any other discussion? Ms. Geese, did you have anything else to add? Thank you. All right, at this time, we will move on to action items. Do I have a motion to approve and see consideration to approve the principal's agreement? Thank you, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Starr. So any discussion? See no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. A poll same side. The motion carries on to item D, consideration to approve the memo of understanding with the teachers. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Ms. Anderson, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Any discussion? See no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. A poll same side. The motion carries on to item F. Consideration to approve updated F Y 22 revised budget, do I have a motion to approve?
So may.
Thank you, Mr. Starr, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, discussion, Ms. Anderson?
You meant E, right?
Yes, E. Sorry, I crossed it off first, so it'd be the F. Any further discussion? See no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. A poll same side. Motion carries on to item F, consideration to approve the original F Y 23 budget, do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Ms. Anderson, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Starr, discussion? See no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. A poll same side. Motion carries on to G, consideration to approve Kirsten Anderson as the identified official with the authority for the state grants of standing schools. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz, discussion? See no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. Yeah, go ahead.
Did we have a limit, Mr. Nelson? Do we have a limit on what we had on that last time with Ms. Geese was going in? Limit of authority of all?
There's two, right now it's Kim and I.
Okay.
Correct, and I think superintendent would be able to answer that.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be slick. He'll take, we'll send it in to Melanie. I'll be done on the 30th and he'll take over on July 1st.
Right, but was there an amount of money that could be, that we have the authority to do without anybody's?
Oh!
I thought so, it was like, I don't know.
Oh, I have to look back at the minutes on that.
I thought it was like, was it $50,000 or?
I think it is 50, but I'll have to go check on that.
I mean, isn't that too much of a pain to put one in there? I mean, I don't know. Is that too much of a pain to do this thing? I, I thought we had a, do we need a limit?
For me, the Iowa responsibilities don't have a whole lot to do with that. That's going into the sys, you know what I mean? That's more approving, who can do like the DIR system, the behavior systems. I mean, the Iowa management, if you're the Iowa for the district, you go in and like all these end-of-the-year reports that we're doing, you have to have Iowa status to be able to do them. So what you're talking about, there is a number in there, but it's used so rarely. But I think it is 50.
They don't ask the board, do we need a number or not? I don't know. If it's a, I don't think it would be a thing to bother if this makes any sense.
Mr. Armstrong?
I think if there was a number, there should continue to be a number.
I haven't needed to use it, yeah.
You should have, two weeks.
No, you know, anything that teeters with 50, I like to bring into the board. If we're purchasing something that significant, I want to make sure that the board knows about it, so. I, when I think of Iowa, these, you know what I mean? I think it's more going in and signing all this stuff, right?
Right.
Or do you remember something about it?
I'm not recalling anything, but I'm trying to find it, but it's, it's a few years back, so.
Yeah, I can't remember.
That's fine, I'm, I'm okay if you guys are okay.
Well, I guess we sign stuff with 50 all the time, but it's usually a cool, you know what I mean? We'll have to look for it. Go ahead, Mr. Schwartz.
Can I screen up the process right, by doing that, or is it a deep one?
Can we just say that if it was in there, let's put it back in there and still vote on it?
I'm trying to figure it out.
I hope so.
You can add it at any time. I think what you need tonight is to give him Iowa authority.
Okay.
If I'm being honest, and then you can find out his comfort level. He might be like, "Ooh, no, 20 grand is as much as I want to do." Or be like, "What? Holy 50?" I think having that Iowa, we need to get rolling on that because Melanie gets all over us on making sure names are right. You cannot be in Iowa, and we ran into this. Troy's was still active. We couldn't get mine to go because he was still active. But he was retired, so we didn't, hadn't moved to a different district at that time. It was quite the, quite the drama for a few days. Is there any other discussion? Are you guys okay with that?
With what?
With if there isn't, if there was a number and then we would add it, it would be part of the motion.
She said we could add it at any time.
Or you could add it at any time, yes. All right, see no further discussion? We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. A poll same side. The motion carries. On to school board member reports, we'll start with Ms. Johnson tonight.
Hey, I had the opportunity to go to the APEC graduation picnic. That was really nice. I did miss the dance, but, but it was nice. It was a really nice gathering, it was a great, large group. I was surprised, so many people. And our new superintendent, Kirsten Anderson, was there with his family, so that was cool. So it was, it was a nice event and the weather was beautiful. Mosquitoes were a little heavy, but food was great. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Starr?
The bond oversight committee, B O C, has now come to the end. We now have the facility committee, Rob and I and Chris, and of course Eric and superintendent. And so we're now going with the facilities, looking ahead, prioritizing projects, what's happening, what's going on, and working with the construction people that's left over, some new bids going out to finalize some of our projects with the interest money from the original bond itself. So there's being worked on, getting great plans out there and looking ahead and pretty much looking, what do we need in the future? What do we see? You hear something, find something, observe something, let us know. Probably didn't think about that, whatever it may be. So bring to our attention, so we can look at it and put on a list to project a cost to repair, fix, or add something into our facilities in the future. And other than that, I think we had a great turnout for the graduation. The temperature in there was fantastic, it was nice in there, nice and cool. And just the program itself went off really well. And again, at graduation, look at Anoka, they had like five different graduations at five different locations because of the size of their district, back home in North Dakota. They graduate on Sunday and we're at weekend all the time. It's been that way for 75 years probably. So you've just got to pick a date and just go with it. And we do the best that we can to make it happen. So we had a great program this year, turned out very, very nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starr, Ms. Anderson.
I concur with Mr. Starr on graduation, it was very, very nice. Staff did a great job, students did a great job, just a very nice job.
All right, Ms. Armstrong, thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Yeah, it's been a crazy couple of weeks, busy. The Learning Center and online, with Miss Parsons over there and that graduation went really well. I also went to the high school graduation, I thought inside was great. That was fun. And Pam did a really good speech, it was awesome. And then the APEC picnic, that was a great end-of-the-year thing. It was nice to meet the superintendent and his family as well, and lots of great kids over there. I'd just like to bring up, the marching band is in Full Swig, if you're into parades. There's, this weekend on Saturday, they'll be at Blaine and Buffalo, and then Sunday at North Ranch. Talented kids, there's like, I think, 130 between the people that carry the banner all the way to the tubos. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of involvement there and they're really good, it's a lot of fun to watch. And then be aware that the play, Mimsy's Junior, will be at the end of June, so in a couple of weekends from now. And that'll be at the P A C, and those tickets are already online, and see yourself that is, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong, Mr. Schwartz?
Concur, Ms. Starr on the graduations, it was really nice. The weather there, I was surprised, so comfortable. It was very nice. We all went together, so thanks everybody that put that together. And the Learning Center graduation, that was really nice too. Everybody was so excited with that.
Yeah, I know.
The energy though.
The energy level was really high.
Pretty easy, that was really good. And I want to do my gift announcements because there's a lot of great companies again, and people and organizations that give to us. $11,500 from Brooklyn Tool Company for the St. Francis Scholarship Program, that's great. $200, $300 St. Francis High School from the choir boosters to be used for the high school scholarship program. $60 from Blackwell Giving Fund, Anderson Corporation, to give to Cedar Creek Elementary to be used as needed. $150 from the series, About the Lions Club, to be used at Cedar Creek Elementary School to be used as needed. $8,226 from the St. Francis Elementary School Association of Parents and Teachers to be used for picnic tables and bench seats. $30 for Blackwell Giving Fund, Anderson Corporation, to the St. Francis Middle School, to be used as needed. $7,000, $9,000, 46 cents, from the St. Francis School P T L, to be used for food for teacher appreciation. That's great. $450 anonymous donation, St. Francis Middle School, to be used for purchasing yearbooks for students. And $3,520 to the St. Francis Track and Field Cross Country Booster Club to be used for 16 hurdles. I'm going to get in the hurdle list. That's a lot of money for 16 hurdles. But maybe they don't tip over, so maybe that's what it is.
Put extra weight on it for you.
Jump over. Thank you very much, everybody, appreciate a lot.
Go ahead, Ms. Starr.
Yeah, just like I say, you know, the Anoka Union Paper did a good story about our baseball team also. Had a nice picture in there of their, of what we've been doing. And when they say on here they scored 41 runs over everybody else, great story about our baseball. Tomorrow we'll find out how they do in the state playoff. They've been doing a great job on the track and field, of course.
We should do well tomorrow and then they'll play right away again on Wednesday. So you could possibly see.
Oh, I told them, that's the only way we're going to get up there. They're like, "Okay, okay, we'll wait for you."
I wanted to start out first by saying that we just have amazing staff here at St. Francis. And my daughter received this, and as all the kids did, at least at the beginning of the bus ride. They pick up my neph, my grandchildren and then they go to my other grade kids. And there's this whole little block of kids up there, I know he's in it, he used to calm the little rascals. Because they all knew each other. And even as kindergartners, you know how a lot of kindergartners walk on the bus? And they're kind of quiet the first day, kind of shy. Oh no, you've got all these kids, they're feeling quite confident, you know? He was just, he was also the bus driver that called my daughter when she saw one of the kids, her kids, get off the bus. And she hadn't, she was walking out the door, but had it made it outside the garage and the truck stopped and was talking to the two boys, and he called my daughter and wanted to make sure that the boys got it safely. Now, the person that was talking to my grandchildren was a neighbor that gives them candy, but the bus driver didn't know that. And my daughter was just like, "Oh my God, who?" The staff members are continually to surprise them and not for adulthood that ever questioned why they opened and rolled in that whole neighborhood. They love District 15, they talk it up. And again, this book was made by the bus driver and here there's pictures. He talks about the kids, he made a story about them. Talks about the kids and how it goes to this house, but now pulls into this driveway and brings up, and it names the kids, they're all named in here, and then along with pictures of all of them in here. So, this was made, you know, he made the books, handed it out, and again, how cool is that? You know, these parents receive this from Rich, the bus driver. He was, he no longer works for us, he had a family situation that now allows him not to be able to work for us at the time. Again, for, doesn't matter what you do in this district, you can impact families and children. And he's had, he had a great impact on all of my grandchildren this year, so I want to give that shout out to Rich. Also, I did have a phone call from a resident wanting to know, how do you, how do you become a school board candidate? Where do you sign up? How do you do it? Asking, and I thought maybe we could come up with a link where if someone was looking on our website. I think the dates are just for those watching, August 2nd through the 16th. You pay a lot, $2, you fill out the paperwork, you can come to district office and you can become a candidate. Yeah, so, but if we could possibly put it on the website, if they're looking, are you thinking about running for school board? Click, this is how you do it, the dates, and that way we, that way it'd be easier, I think, on staff as well, so.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Bartus?
Yeah. If they, if they do have any questions about elections, filing dates, filing process, anything like that, absolutely, you can give my contact information with the departure of Ms. Springer. I've taken over all the election duties.
That was kind of a natural fit, wasn't it?
What's that?
That was kind of a natural fit, wasn't it?
I, I asked for that one, you know, I, I do love elections.
So for those watching, for those who aren't watching, is there a way we can put out an easy, just information as they click on the website of, these are the dates and where to even just come to district office and talk to Eric? And that way, I think it would be easier for our community who don't watch the school board meetings to find out. Because I think there's, a lot of people don't know how to get that information.
Brandon had a really nice guy stuck into the V and sent over to the Learning Center and they just printed it off for him.
Perfect.
Yeah, if people come up, we definitely help them. We can, we can make it even easier for them.
Just the information on the front news of, since it's coming up, we're now within the final, you know, month of it, or two months, so. And if not, great year, and we'll see everybody, we're having a meeting in July, June, one more?
We are having one at the end of June. And mainly, it really will be a come-in and make Brandon happy and approve any hires and, well, we need a curriculum director too, that'll be a big one.
That's June 27th, right?
27th, that'd be a really quick meeting. And honestly, if you can't make it, we know you all have trips planned and stuff like that ahead of time. It's just, we just need a forum so we could get those approved, that would be great.
All right, same, yes, go ahead.
Oh yeah, if you guys could off film this out right now and then, and then we read that would be great. Then we'll have the job for that.
There you go.
All right, it's not, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Are you blocking the grid?
This word is hard, this word is hard, this word is hard, this word is hard, this word is hard.